We are going to start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of silence. Please. Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Simon?
Here.
Counselor Turena?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counsel President Stickley?
Here.
We have five members present. Okay, Counselor Chamberlain did call and he is excused from tonight's meeting. So, we are asking Counselors at time to review the prior meeting's minutes. Can we get a motion to move forward on those?
I'll sort moves ahead.
I'll second. Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. May the reports, we have a Finance Committee report on January 20th, 2025.
Okay, at the meeting, President were Shane Chamberlain, Sarah Heising, and myself, committee members and staff, Phil Kessler, Keith Targett, Jamie Juguet, Tom McLars, and Corinne Miller. The matter dealt with the Glenwood Avenue assessment. This was something that was done in like 20 years ago, and several people or some people have paid their assessments, but several have not, and they want to know what their options were since it was due at the end of the month here in January. So, we discussed it, and the option that we had that was given to us that we discussed was to extend the due date by another eight years. And that would give them time to decide if they're going to sell, how they're going to come up with the money and so forth to pay the various assessments. If I remember right, after the eight years, they had additional five, wasn't it, to go beyond that, or is it just the eight?
Yeah. Once that trigger hits, then they would have five years to make five payments, equal to the total amount.
Okay. So, we recommend taking necessary steps to extend the due date by eight years. Counselor Chamberlain made that motion, I seconded, passed three to zero. Another matter that was discussed was the investments the city has made. Jamie provided the committee with a lengthy list of city investments and so forth, a lot of numbers in that page. But we reviewed the statements and we, once again, Counselor Chamberlain made the motion to accept it, but seconded by Counselor Heising, and that passed three to zero. And that was the main part of the meeting. Most of it dealt with the Glenwood assessment.
Okay. Any questions on the recommendations for this? Because we do have a recommendation that Council take the necessary steps to extend the deadline for paying the Glenwood assessments, eight years additional years from January 25, 2025.
I'll move on that.
I'll second.
Recommendation that Council takes the necessary steps to extend the deadline for paying the Glenwood assessment, eight additional years from January 25, 2025, moved by Counsel Turena and seconded by Counsel Simon. Any discussion?
I just want to add, since I was at that meeting, that there is not an option to extend it past that legally. So, some have paid, and so it can't be pushed, you know, past that. So, if this comes up again in the next, how many years, like, it's just not an option to extend it again.
And we will be meeting with those members, people that still have to pay that extension.
So hopefully, they get all the information they need to be able to make a plan, whether it's selling or whatever they need to do.
Counselor Turena?
Yes.
Counselor Simon?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries. Okay, and the second recommendation out of the Finance Committee was the recommendation to approve the investment, to approve the investment statements presented by Finance Director.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Recommendation to approve the investment statements presented by the Finance Director, moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries. Thank you. Department head reports. We have Chief Kessler, let's start with you.
We wrapped up January and we're getting into February at a fast pace, but I just want to remind Council the county supper is February 18th. Several members are receiving their here's-a-service awards for the county. So, I think we have 29 representing our community there, which is a lot, and it's appreciated. It says a lot about...
One is 40 years, correct?
One of them is 40 years, yes. It says a lot about the support that we receive. We, big things we did this past month, we continue to work with the community on different drills, and one of them was the Health Department. And one that we do monthly that many don't know is with FCHC and their hyperbaric chambers. And if anybody watched the news this past week, up in Detroit, just north of, I think it was in Troy, they had one explode, and unfortunately, pediatric patient passed away because of it. So, that's the importance of why we do what we do on a daily basis. And just to wrap it up, one of the other important things happening this month in February is on February 16th, we're having the Second Annual Heroes vs. Heroes Basketball Game between Public Safety and Triangular Processing. And it's at 3:00 PM at the high school, and it's a great event. We've been, like, yesterday, our staff and Triangular and some of law enforcement in the county got together at the Old Racquet Ball Club, and we played basketball together for about two, two-and-a-half hours, so, good time.
Last year was very entertaining.
It was full, wasn't it?
I enjoyed it.
It was a great crowd, so.
And I appreciate all of the first responders that come throughout the county that help with this because, you know, they're taking their Sunday, going and having fun, but yeah, it's always nice to see that you guys are giving your time, volunteering your time for that.
Good stuff. Thank you.
And hopefully, nobody gets hurt.
No guarantees.
No, I cheer.
So I got one question. How many chambers do they have at Sarah's Garden?
There is two at Sarah's Garden, and there's two of them at FCHC.
Who's that?
At FCHC. In their wound, in their wound center, their wound clinic, but they're, but they're a different style than what you see at Sarah's Garden.
So, are they inspected, Phil?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So what can go wrong with them? They're just pumping oxygen in, right?
Yep, and oxygen's highly flammable, and you're talking about bringing individuals down to deep fathoms, and so a lot of things can go wrong, whether it's decompression issues to fire, so.
They were saying on the news that perfumes and other things can set them off, is that correct?
That is correct, yep. Static electricity, yep.
Wow.
So this training that you had was to make not only you guys more educated, but also them as well, together to what you guys would do?
So it's a facility, so like with FCHC, it's a facility-wide training. So we start out in the clinic with a scenario, and it's timed such as a real event would occur. So there's a 911 call, there's a dispatch, the staff there start bringing the patient back up to depth, and as we arrive, we start mitigating the issue, whatever it is, and assist them with retrieving the patient from, from the chamber itself. And then, depending on the medical issue or the fire issue, like this one involved cardiac arrest, so we work the patient from a medical standpoint there, and then transport to the ER, and then the ER continues that care there. So it's a facility-wide event.
Okay.
Wow.
Good. All righty. Any other questions for Chief? Okay, to Kevin?
As Chief Kessler said, Heroes vs. Heroes, second, second year in a row for basketball. Coming up Sunday, February 16th, we have three officers signed up to play and four, four people signed up for volunteering for some of the other jobs that get done that day. Really good cause, really cool event. We're excited to be a part of it again, and hopefully, everybody can make it out to visit that. And then, we've just been working, Police Department moving along, getting ready for the spring, when we tend to get really busy. And then later tonight, Mayor has a recognition for Matt McDonough, retired. We're still taking applications, looking for someone to be a full-time police officer with our department.
Any questions?
Is there an admission fee for that game?
I believe it's $5 admission, but I think it said veterans get it free.
Veterans get it free.
Play at the high school?
Yeah, at the high school gym.
What time?
3 o'clock it starts. Should be over by about 6:00.
It's a good show.
Gonna have a life squad there.
Oh, yeah.
Just want to make sure that...
There's no question.
Right.
You old people.
We need more than three.
Three to six.
That's what we got this year.
There's three basketball games, there's four teams, and it ends with a championship game at the end. And then that intermission...
It was exciting last year.
Yes.
And entertaining.
Yep, there's a small intermission, so, $5 admission.
Okay. Keith?
All right, just a couple of updates from Thursday. We, our feasibility study, Mallon, Weifman will be here tomorrow at 9:30 to start going through the process here. We'll have people on staff to assist with that. Working with Arcadis and the water plant to do a filter study and a few other things to meet our EPA requirements, as well as get our year-end information and all the information that they need for their reports. Still working on water breaks throughout the city. We apologize to anybody that gets in convenience, but they're taking care of them as soon as they relocate them. And last on my list is, as I told you on Thursday, that unfortunately, Matt Gilroy, our Economic Development Coordinator, Director, is leaving us at the end of this month, and we are actively searching for a new one to take his place.
Yes, and you had four breaks last week, what was that, Monday, Tuesday?
Four in one day. They were out from 10:30 in the morning, 10:30 at night until, we sent them home at noon because they were just exhausted.
And I am finding out that this is happening all over in this area. It's just, you have a dry summer, and then you have weather going like what it says, 50, and then we're going to have ice on Wednesday. Everything is just banging around down there, and all villages in this area are having the same issues. So, that made me feel not better that we're having it, but the fact that it's not just our pipes, yeah, it's definitely all over. So, I appreciate Public Works doing everything that they're doing to try to fix them, but of course, it's always when it's freezing cold out that they're going to break, that's not fun. Okay.
Real quick.
Yeah.
So I remember that you had mentioned that the EPA was wanting us to do something with our water treatment as far as like mercury, or wanting us to like change how we do things, and you were holding them off.
We're working with them as far as on aeration, things to lower the TTHM levels.
Yeah.
Our, our levels aren't below the standard, and we're working to, with the tower back at the fairgrounds, back online, the aeration in there, that's helping to keep the levels lower. We're looking to add aeration into the wall dash tower to drop them more, and we're also looking at possibly adding aeration to our clear wells in front of the water plant to help eliminate them right at the source.
Oh, nice.
But if you take out too much, then you have a problem with something else down there. So we, that's why we have the engineers looking at it to see what the fine balance is to where we can make the best of it possible, three to six.
Was that mercury?
No.
It was the THM, yeah. I didn't think we had a mercury issue.
No.
It was the THM, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Brandon.
Yeah.
Working with, not holding off.
No, and not mercury, because that went away a long time ago.
Yeah, that was like 10 years.
Yeah, thank you.
There was, there was a company that had it, it was on TV, that found jars of mercury, and they just wanted to know where they come from.
Not from Waseon.
Not from Waseon. Archibald. Sorry, didn't mean that, that was a joke. Michigan on that, Archibald, Michigan.
There you go. Now we're going to get a call from that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, stop, this is archibald, this is archibald, here.
That wasn't...
Okay. Brandon, you started, my goodness. Anything else for Keith?
We have two reporters here on the TV, and I wanted to clarify, had nothing to do with Waseon.
Jamie?
Okay, so I provided the January month-end reports, and you might have noticed that our income tax is down 20% from where we were last year. If you see, we were up $229,000 from the year before in January and last year, so it's just kind of a timing of when payments are being received. I don't see it being an issue, and we'll probably get back on track next month.
Next month and the following month as well. Okay. Any questions for Jamie at all?
I had one, I just had a resident ask me, they're, they said that they just had been meaning to ask, they had a kid file taxes in the city, and they were told, I don't know, something like $70 or something that they overpaid, and they said you don't get that back. So I wondered, what is the limit that someone has to overpay to have it returned to them? Because they didn't understand why.
Our limit is $10, so it has to be something completely different than just the dollar limit.
Okay. So if they overpay by more than $10, they get that returned to them?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. She thought it was 70 or something like that, so I just wanted to check. So that must have been wrong.
Thank you. Good question. Tom?
Well, we have a lot of to report. There's several ordinances and resolutions up for review by Council. I would just follow up though on the, so on the recommendation of Finance Committee with respect to the extension of that 25-year period, so I think the next step, the ultimate step will be an ordinance by Council approving a petition signed by each of the remaining owners. So I think the process will be to have the Finance Committee reach out by way of letter, have a committee meeting, as was held way back in 2014, explain the circumstances to folks, and hopefully, get them on board. I think we would have to have signatures of all the, all the current owners. I assume that's not going to be a problem, but that would be the, I think that's the process that we're envisioning. So Finance Committee will get a letter out to all the residents, set up a meeting time, they'll come in, committee can explain, we can explain what's going on, hopefully get everybody on board, get a petition signed, and then it'll be a matter of having an ordinance passed by Council. And I probably will need to reach out to the folks in Cincinnati or Cleveland, wherever Katie was at, for assistance with the ordinance, but it'll be something very similar to what we passed way back when in 2000.
What would be the, what would be the backup plan if someone refuses to sign and needs to sign? I guess that was on my mind when we discussed it.
Yeah, I think, I think the Council wouldn't, your hands would be tied, I think you'd have to have the, the original petitioners or the, or their successors that remain sign the petition. I'll have to double-check that, but I believe that's the case.
Okay.
Then the only thing would be to, yeah, I mean, if there was nothing to change that, then I guess we would have to start asking people to honor the, the payment schedule and that.
I wouldn't want to be that person that said no.
Well, I, I just thought, I mean, there could be someone who just decides they don't want to deal with it, and you know, I don't know.
Okay.
So that's really all, I just wanted to point that out. Yeah. I can answer any questions on legislation if we get to those.
Okay.
Or have those.
All right, well, we'll move into legislation then. First reading, ordinance 2025-2 is an ordinance amending Section 311.02 of the codified ordinances of the City of Waseon.
What is this one regarding?
This is the amendment to the parade statute.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion to place ordinance 2025-2 on first reading, moved by Counsel Turena and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion? Yeah.
Do you guys get these in your packets? The, the ordinance?
Yeah, I think there was one. You got one?
It should be in your packets when they come.
Yeah.
Because I thought that was requested, just because I want to make sure you're getting them.
An email? I saw, yeah, I had more papers in my email than I do here, but...
I mean, we could always have those copies from that, because that's what I do, I just kind of make sure.
You should put it on here.
That's what I just...
Hold one up. And I thought it was going to...
Easily.
Something.
We'll just make sure it's a...
It's okay, there's just a lot on there tonight, I want to know which one it had to do with, so, no big deal.
I need my cheat sheets. I do.
It's okay.
Okay. Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries. Okay, ordinance 2025-3 is an ordinance amending 1301.10A of the codified ordinances of the City of Waseon and would declare this an emergency.
Is this the zoning one?
This is the inspection fees.
Okay.
That you guys had the copies of the fees?
Well, this is actually the, amending the statute so that provides the Council will make, will review the fees, approve the fees.
Outdated, yeah. Counsel Turena's inspection fees outdated.
I'll make a motion on that.
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion to place ordinance 2025-3 on emergency reading, moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel Simon. Any discussion? Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final.
Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2025-3 on final reading, moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Turena. Any discussion? Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries. Okay, next we have Resolution 2025-2, a resolution revising Section 623.3A of the local government manual and declaring it an emergency. And this is the desire to revise the vacation schedule.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion to place Resolution 2025-2 on emergency reading, moved by Counsel Turena and seconded by Counsel Schneider. Any discussion? Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider, I'm sorry.
I like that name.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Nailed it.
Right.
Final.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll do discussion point.
Oh, you want to talk about?
Which she does it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion to place Resolution 2025-2 on final reading, moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Turena. Any discussion?
Yes. Were we able to?
Denied.
Dang it. Were we able to make sure that this was separate? I know there was that discussion Thursday morning.
Yes, yes, separate, from the longevity issue.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll meet on that this week, yeah, but this is just a vacation, so.
Okay, cool.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries. Okay. Resolution 2025-3 is a resolution approving the residential building fees and declaring it an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion to place Resolution 2025-3 on emergency reading, moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Simon. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final.
Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2025-3 on final reading, moved by Counsel Simon and seconded by Counsel President Stickley. Any discussion? Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries. Okay. Resolution 2025-4 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the Enterprise Sanitary Sewer Project, authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest and best bid, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder, and declaring this an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion to place Resolution 2025-4 on emergency reading, moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion? Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final. Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2025-4 on final reading, moved by Counsel Turena and seconded by Counsel Simon. Any discussion? Counsel, Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries. Okay, thank you. We have nothing under the second or third reading, but we do have quite a bit under new business. The first thing is, I'm still completing all of the boards and commissions that I have to get filled. So for civil service, we're filling that with Paul Colan, and zoning board of appeals, we are putting back Mike Christman.[1610.62] And zoning board of appeals, we are putting back Mike Christman. He has asked to stay on. And Pride and Preservation is Steve Brown and Kevin Nelson. And then on the tax incentive review board, we have Phil Kessler.
I would make, are you going to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept all your people from, on your committees.
I'll second. Motion to approve the mayor's appointments to various boards and commissions, moved by Council President Stickley and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion? Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Five VAs, zero NAs, motion carries.
Thank you. The next agenda is Chief Supermarket is applying for liquor, state liquor agency contract. So we just keep this as no action?
Any objection, request for a hearing? If not, right to me.
Next, we have a recognition for Officer Matt McDonough's retirement. And we'd like you to come up forward. And Kevin, you want to come up? Okay. This is, turn around. Turn around right there. There you go. You can stand like this if you want. We would like to take the time and in front of council to recognize Matt McDonough for serving 25 years with the City of Waseon. And we're also going to quiz his chief. And where else has he worked?
So it would be Defiance?
Yes.
Defiance County and Edgerton.
Yeah.
That's not us.
And one more. Was it one more?
No.
That's it. So Defiance and Edgerton with the added years of 42 years altogether as an officer for service in this Northwest Ohio, which I am very grateful that the 25 years was spent with Waseon. And after meeting all of the people that came to your retirement party, oh my goodness, he is very well-loved by our city and people around the county and everyone else. So with that being said, I kind of went off the board. I didn't get you a plaque. And your chief said that is good. So what we have here for you, and I don't have the 25 years on the line. This is for you to hang up in your home and to remind you how much you are appreciated with the Waseon Police. It has your number and your name and the blue flag. Thank you so very much. But what I'd like you to do, first of all, get a picture with.
We have your picture.
Yeah, get a picture. Okay. Thank you. One more. Brother, the late brother. Yes. Would you like to walk around and let council congratulate you on your retirement? I can put this back here for you. Thank you.
Congratulations. I hope you get some relax.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Matt, for all the brilliant service you've done. Appreciate it. You've been great.
Congratulations, Matt.
Happy retirement.
That's right. Brandon, are you even 25 yet?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
26.
All right. Okay. So after that, I think we just, I have nothing under old business, council? If anything? All right. Then I guess we just need to pay the bills, so we can go home.
I'll second.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Simon. Any discussion?